Six thirty one, we're gonna open the meeting officially. As usual, as always, the meeting is being broadcast live and digitally recorded, so please know that going into it. So we will start off with open session, but we'd like to ask Sergeant Fort to say a few words for an update, if you wouldn't mind?
Is this regarding last Wednesday?
It is, yes.
So last Wednesday, myself and Officer Aiman, as I'm sure you're all aware, were summoned to Nine Thompson Road to search for an eighty-two year old man that was lost in the woods. This eighty-two year old actually routinely goes out on ATV and splits wood. He's got eleven acres of property. He went out there, started splitting wood with his nephew. His nephew and him finished, he sent his nephew back, said, "I'm just gonna cover up this log splitter and I'll be back." But he decided to look for another tree to cut down, so he can go put his log splitter in that position. He got lost, it got dark. This gentleman is on a breathing machine, I guess it's a six hour battery pack where it's just been breathing. He can barely walk four steps before he has to use this machine. So he got lost and decided by himself that he's just gonna stop, sit on his machine, and just not move anywhere until morning time. Well, the concerns were is he doesn't have no more machine, 'cause it's been after six hours. After our first search with fire department, started getting dark, we realized we better get out of the woods ourselves. Called mutual aid in, called air wing, searched for several hours with no luck. We had three bloodhounds that assisted, three hours looking, still no luck. Started getting real tired, everybody's getting tired, two more state troopers joined in in the search, with two K-9 officers actually located this gentleman at five twenty in the morning, which in good spirits, good health. Former military guy just says, "I'm not going anywhere, I'm just gonna sit here," so he was doing very well. But we did locate him, but it took a long time. Our search extended all the way to the ferry line. What happened with the bloodhounds is that he goes out into these woods so many times that his scent was throughout the whole area, so they really didn't have a specific area to guide. Without quadrants, they just quadranted off and they just followed him. They went through a mile and a half up into the woods where he was located, and we just didn't go that far out, 'cause we didn't think he was that far out there. But it was a good turnout, we did locate him.
Well, we thank you very much for your efforts.
Thank you.
And... It sounds to me like the, you know, communication was excellent between all parties.
We had mutual aid from three different towns, the air wing, state police, bloodhounds from PTCM, Orange, and Apple, just a couple places that just assisted us, and they just stayed out there until we located him.
So that makes...
As well as all the fire, I guess, that we had there as well from our own community.
And the comfort level and sort of pride that we all sort of get from that sort of effort, which I know is very far from a training effort, but, you know, it just, it just makes us, makes us appreciate all the training you guys do, so...
Thank you.
Thanks, again. Good, Ryan?
Yes, no, that's it, thank you.
Okay. Is anyone else here for open session? Hi, come on up.
A couple things, um, I was gonna start with this one. We gave you, the planning board has some proposed bylaw changes, I don't know if you guys are aware of this at all, and I just wanna give you a copy of them for the next town meeting. You don't have a copy of it?
This is the, an item that's on your agenda for your next meeting, correct?
No, we've already voted to it, we've already voted for it. You guys have to, you have to accept it-
Okay.
-and then give it back to the planning board, and then we'll hold a public hearing.
Okay.
So whenever, I know the, I don't know if the, is the, is the warrant open yet, or...
No, we were just talking about that, so...
Okay, so we just, when you get that, to that, this is something that we wanna put on that.
And the reason I said that is 'cause your next meeting, I was looking at your agenda at some point, and it does have the-
Right.
-this on there.
But you guys, this is the topic of that.
Anything, anything major, or just little kind of housekeeping?
Well, most of it, like, with the earth removal law, they wanna change the, we wanna change the, the time for writing the report, making a decision from thirty days to sixty days. Being a part-time board, it's just, you know, we, we met-
You guys meet every week.
Yeah, we met five times on the week, so that's not one thing. The other change is the Equifa map, it's basically staying the same, it's just updating it and putting it on. We're gonna use the latest GIS map, so people, when they, they wanna do a project in town, they can go to GIS and find out the exact location, and stuff like that, and I think there's one other minor.
It's on the bond, or the cash security?
Cash security, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. They're pretty minor, just, we're just trying to modernize it and clean it up. Okay, that's one thing. Now, I'm here as a private citizen, the planning board does not, has anything to do with this, they don't even know about it. As you all well know, that we had all these open meeting law problems, complaints and stuff like that. And it just does revolve around the planning board, but I'm not representing the planning board, just make sure that's clear. When we had a complaint, it's irrelevant what the complaint was about, we had Copeland Page come in and give us a, help us write a, help us write a response to it. We, we had them come in, they did the response, and then we, when we got the response, we talked to the Attorney General's office and we did our own research. And Copeland Page's response was a hundred and eighty degrees wrong. It was, they were asking us to admit to something that we didn't do, for one thing. But the other thing, it's so egregiously wrong, it's, it's just unbelievable. It's like if you went to a doctor and said to cut my right leg off, they cut the left leg off. That's how completely wrong it was. And they, for this wrong decision, they charged us over twenty-four hundred dollars. So what I would like the selectmen to do is to write to Copeland Page and ask them for an explanation of why it's so wrong, and say maybe something we missed, and if they, and ask for a refund for the money. And it's a lot of money, and I have copies here for all you guys of all the documentation, everything, so you can read it. I don't expect you to read it, I can spin it. This is copies of all the decisions that they wrote, and the decision that we wrote, and a decision that the Attorney General wrote in response to it.
So, just to make it clear, to understand it again, so the, they helped you-
Write a decision.
A decision on, after you received it from the-
We received the complaint, and then the procedure in the town is set forth is to have Copeland Page come in and help the board or whoever write the complaint response.
Response.
That response that they gave us was completely wrong.
And that's the one that was submitted to the Attorney General?
No, we did not submit that.
You didn't submit it?
We wrote our own response.
After doing your own research?
After doing our own research.
Okay.
And the Attorney General and his copy of this is in there, agreed with us one hundred percent.
Okay, well, we'll get into that.
Take a look at it.
Yeah, so I appreciate if you, I'd like to know, the money is one thing, but I'd like to know why they did it. And is, are we missing something? And that decision is based on, a lot of other decisions were, I don't wanna go over all that, but there's a lot of other things that were made, decisions made that led to a lot of other legal costs that I think were pretty outrageous.
Yeah.
So I think, yeah...
All right, well, we'll take it seriously.
Thank you.
Tom, could I just backpedal for one second?
Yeah.
The five thousand dollar security, is that for a driveway opening, it's on the streets and sidewalks? Or is that for a gravel pit entrance?
It's, uh, let me see. No, this is for any time someone goes across the road, so, um...
Oh, with a trench or something?
Say, someone's gonna dig across the road for some reason for a trench, okay, we wanna fill in the trench and have them do it correctly and post a bond, to make sure that we don't go back a year later and have to redo the whole thing off. That's what that's about.
If you have copies of those, if you have extras, why can't you put them in, or don't deal with them?
Don't deal with them, yeah.
All right, thanks, Tom.
Yep.
So, is any, excuse me, is anyone else here for open session? No, okay, well, we'll get started then. Brian, you wanna start us off?
Sure, appointment of animal inspector, we have an application from Kristen Salerno.
We don't have an application, she's currently the, um...
I'm sure we do.
Yeah, no, she's currently the animal control, and they wanna have her be animal inspector.
Okay.
And this is a position to April thirtieth, it's not the normal June, so I gave you that information in there to go.
Make a motion to appoint Kristen Salerno for animal inspector, term to end April thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen.
Second the motion.
Discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Well, thank you. You just need to take this to Joyce, and she'll swear you went over there, and she'll give me a copy. Great, thank you guys.
Thank you, thank you.
A one-day pouring license for the, I'm not sure if I should describe it as the Boy Scouts, or...
Yeah.
And I believe it's gonna benefit the Boy Scouts.
Copy of this.
Hey, guys, no worries.
Good, how about you? How about you?
So it's fun.
Yeah.
So, we're coming here tonight, we'd like to run a fundraiser at the rec field. We've actually been to the Parks Commission already surrounding this, and they've said it's fine. And what we're proposing to do is really a family event, calling it Hubtoberfest, sort of a play on Oktoberfest. We're gonna offer German food, entertainment, family games, those types of things, and also beer and wine. That's why we're here this evening. What we're doing is we're raising money to bring boys on a high adventure truck. We're gonna be going to Philmont Scout Ranch out in New Mexico. This is in August of two thousand and eighteen. Costs is about twenty thousand dollars to take the seven boys and three advisors to go out there. There's a lot of preparation that goes into this to get ready for it, so we're planning on doing that. Myself, Jamie, and Laura Foley are the three adult advisors, and we do have some members of the troop here as well that have boys that are planning to attend. We're trying to defray the cost, we're not probably going to raise the entire amount of money, but to put something towards that, we've planned this event. I think, you know, obviously you think Boy Scouts, you think beer and wine. We're actually not raising money under the Boy Scout name, you're never gonna see Boy Scouts of America or anything like that on it. We actually go through our charter organization, which is the Pinecrest Property Owners Association. We've gotten a letter of support from them to do this.
Which you guys should have.
Yeah, from, yeah, Bill, it's signed, Bill signed it.
Bill Holmans, yeah. Yeah, so he's given us the okay to do that. As we can say scouts, those types of things, we can't get into the Boy Scouts.
Understood.
Can't use their name, we can't use their logos, we can't use their images, nothing like that. We are, we are under the auspices of the PPOA, supporting Hubbardston scouting. So...
So, Katie, Katie, so we just had to get a, for the two-hundred-and-fiftieth, and there was a pretty clear separation from where the booze was and where the people were, 'cause we actually, you probably saw it up on the field there, and the kids couldn't go in there and all that sort of stuff, so... Have you already thought of like the setup and all that sort of stuff?
We, we are, we're gonna obviously abide by, and I've already been in contact with the police chief and the fire chief. I have not had a chance to talk back with the police chief, but, you know, I think one of the things we have to consider is what the expected throughput was going to be at the two-hundred-and-fiftieth. We're gonna be a fraction of that. We're, we're also gonna have, you know, we're gonna, we're insuring a lot of things when, in addition to the insurance policy that the local council extends to members of the Boy Scouts of America to cover us when we, when we go somewhere on events, we'll be getting a one-day insurance policy, event insurance policy, which will cover liquor liability. Anyone that pours will be tip certified, and, and no boy, and no one under twenty-one years of age will handle alcohol in any way, whether it be cleanup or anything else. So, you know, that, that being said, with respect to where we set up the meals and the pouring and the, and the entertainment, and obviously we wanna make it as close as possible to, you know, to make it family oriented. At the same time, you know, we'll, we'll obviously abide by, you know, whatever the police chief's requirements are in that regard. But I, I think we're covering, trying to cover all of our bases up front. And just, you know, my, my appeal to, to the police chief will be understanding what our throughput is gonna be and how that might have been different with what could have happened with the two-fiftieth, where thousands of people were walking, you know, walking to the event and potentially, you know, walking through there. We're gonna be doing ticket sales ahead of time, we'll have, we'll have walk-up sales available, but we're mostly gonna be doing online and in-person ticket sales, so we know what our throughput is gonna be, or most of it is gonna be, ahead of time. So we'll scale the event, you know, based on that fact.
Awesome, anyone, anyone have any additional questions? I mean, I'll be there. Is there a rain day?
No, we're gonna do it under tents.
Rain or shine. Yep, rain or shine, because it's the same day as the, as the Lions hayride.
Right.
So we're, we'll be encouraging people to come have a great meal, have a great time, and then go on a great hayride.
Great.
Up at, up at the ranch.
Sounds good, I think it's a great idea, and good luck to you guys.
So we're... It's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for these kids, this is like really the Olympics of, besides maybe the national jamboree, this is really the Olympics for Boy Scouting, is to go on this, uh, this-
Trek.
Trek to northeast New Mexico.
Well, how long is it, a week?
We'll be gone-
Ten days.
Ten days, it's five days in the back country. Base camp is at six thousand feet elevation, we'll probably get up to about eight.
We'll summit, well, one of them's ten thousand.
One of them's ten thousand feet, so...
Be going up.
Yeah, so, it's a lot of training and a lot of preparation.
For air.
So, and, and a lot of cost to pray, so this is...
We got a question from the audience?
No, it wasn't a question, I was just gonna mention that I happen to work with somebody whose son just had that opportunity to go, and he just said it was the most amazing trip of his career.
Awesome.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the one-day pour license for the Hubtoberfest on ten twenty-one.
Second the motion.
Further discussion?
Subject to conditions from the police chief and the fire chief.
Sounds good.
Yep.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor?
For all of us?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Good luck. See you there.
I'm staying right here. I believe, if I know your agenda correctly.
Thanks, guys.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Mr. Chairman, we had suggested to you, I think earlier in an email, that we would like to bring the, your town administrator search committee in, to have a chance to talk to the board about what you're looking for in the next town administrator. We also thought it might be an opportunity to ask residents if there were any that wanted to come forward, or employees that might wanna come forward and talk to you also about what they would see in the next town administrator. It's an opportunity for you to talk to your headhunter, if you will, and for the search firm to also talk with your clients. I'm about to promote some, some discussion, and I don't know if I, I guess Jamie can start it off.
Yeah, so I, I think we've had, well, officially two meetings now, so it's, we had one initial meeting we organized, so I was elected chair, Sergeant Fort was elected vice chair, and Sandra Barry-
That's happened before, I think.
Yeah, well, see, the difference is, is that he was, Sergeant Fort was voted in in absentia, so, that taught him. And Sandra is our, is our secretary, so. So we have organized, we have gone through the schedule that the leader of town administrators put together, we agree with it. We have to make a few adjustments, just because we had to reschedule our first meeting, but I think we're, we're on a good path. Applications are starting to come in. I think it's time, and I think it's appropriate, and I think this is something that we didn't, we didn't do in our last two searches on which I served, in terms of hearing from you as our client. You know, we're, you're asking us to, to vet candidates and bring to you what we think of the top three candidates. Well, how do we, how do you think we should be determining what those top three candidates, or top X candidates, whatever it might be? How many candidates do you wanna interview? You know, what, you know, how many, you know, what do you think is considered top? Whatever it may be, whatever's on your mind that you think we should be looking for, that's appropriate as part of a, a job search committee that, that we're appointed to, and tasked to do for you.
Well, you know, just to get the discussion going here, you know, I might as well use recent experience from sort of analyzing what makes things able to run in town, which is the most important thing that needs to get done, his business needs to get done. So, you know, I, I think what I've found over the last probably, I don't know, three years, is the ability for that administrator, that leader, to galvanize the inter-municipal departments that he or she oversees, and avoid derision, you know, embrace collaboration, all that sort of stuff. You know, and I'm not setting aside experience or any other item right now, but just the first thing that comes to my mind is, is that ability to, you know, engage cooperation and, you know, in a workplace, you know? I mean, that's, that's what it is, I think, you know?
Yeah, communication, I think, you know, first and foremost, I think communication. Thing that's important to me too is probably experiencing grant writing. You know, we don't obviously have the financial resources, and Hubbardston do a whole lot of stuff, so we rely a lot on grants to do things, and the better grant writing we can get, the, the better grants we get. So, you know, there's certainly services that we can contract out to write grants and everything, but, and for big ones, we may. But I think some experience in grant writing is, is important.
And then, you know, just another item that, that is, just almost goes without saying, but, but finance has to be, well, has to, I mean, you, you never know, but finance to me, and the way, sort of the numbers all work, and what steals from what, and what can be transferred to what, you know, all that sort of inner workings of, you know, the financial pieces of municipal government, you know, has to be second nature. And I know that's not always the case, specifically if you have people coming from the outside sector and all that, but you can gauge whether or not there's that level of, you know, sort of knowledge of how everything fits together.
Yeah, I think that budget process is definitely important.
But I think definitely, number one for me is good communication, good energy, good collaborative, collaborative skills, I think is the thing that'll move us forward.
You know, we've talked about this before, and, and, you know, I know we really haven't gotten into exactly what we're gonna be offering for this position, and I know it's commensurate with experience and all that, but Hubbardston-type towns often are stepping stones for, you know, future positions at towns with more money and people.
I believe that's in any department that we have.
Okay, you're right, you're right, so it is, so, but anyway, that's, it's, that's a little bit more abstract as far as gauging a candidate, is whether or not they're just trying to get that year under their belt and then they're gone. But, you know, if, you never know, it's something to sort of keep an eye, I think from, from our standpoint, to keep an eye on, because having continuity, we found this out the last year, six months or whatever, since Brian sort of righted the ship here, but, you know, it, it, continuity's important, and you, you're right, I mean, same thing, you guys get all that turnover, it's like, you know, starting at the academy, training, learning the, and then gone, it's like, gonna start over again, so...
So, so if we saw a candidate, all other things being equal, that had the potential for longevity, would you say that's an attribute that, that you would like to see?
I mean, yes and no, I mean, Anita was here for three years. You know, this was not the kind of town she was gonna stay in long-term, we knew that, you know, she was getting back into the field, but we benefited immensely from her being here for three years, so I don't necessarily think longevity is somebody, you know, is a non-starter.
And, you know, just sort of speaking of the Anita experience, you never know. It doesn't sound to me, from, you know, all the discussions we've had with her, is that she just was out looking. You know, the Wes Boylston job came up, which is much closer to her house, pays a lot more money.
Opportunity.
It just comes up, you know, people leave for other reasons, and you just, you know, it's life.
Is there, is there something that, in, in terms of helping us, either in questions or in responding to questions about the town, that you, that you would see could come up from a candidate? That, as far as either, either problems or aspirations, or, you know, things like that, that, that either they inquire on, or that you would want us to inquire on in terms of moving the town forward?
I think the biggest question we got, I remember from the last two rounds of interviews that we went through, was how do you make things work in this town with, I mean, kind of paraphrasing, but how do you make things work with so little resources? I mean, how, how, how is that gonna be a fruitful and, you know, satisfying job when you really does nothing, you can't do anything?
And, and that would further the conversation on regionalization options, or, you know, school district, you know, which is sixty percent of the, the-
Budget.
-total budget, so, those are the, the willingness, I guess, to, to be, you know, sort of supremely open-minded about all that sort of stuff is, is probably pretty important, too. 'Cause, you know, it's not like there's, this is gonna change.
Innovation and creativeness.
Yeah, and there's only so many things, and, you know, we've been doing this a long time, and there's only so many things you can-
Actually do, you know.
Right, but not having a conversation is much worse.
I think it's also important to let them know that we are in dire need of having businesses come into this town. We can't stay as we are, and that-
Revenue.
-that is a key thing as far as I'm concerned, that they would have to be dealing with, and be creative about to help us get this.
Revenue. How do we increase revenue?
Either the ability to attract revenue and/or, would you say, not that you can ask for it, but, you know, at least if you can divine it on their resume, or through, through some crafty question, if, if they frankly have a Rolodex, you know, of, of people that-
Contacts and so forth, yeah.
Contacts, you know. Okay.
So, part of, I think, what we were gonna be talking about tonight was how the application process is going. That, we've said it for, so selection committee reviews add in schedule nine twenty-seven, so that's on you guys. And then, candidate, list of interview candidates, so we've got candidate evaluation eleven-six to eleven-twenty-four, and develop list of interviews candidates for eleven-twenty-nine, selection committee interviews twelve-six. So that, you had, you had sort of alluded to it before, but that still all feels doable?
I think so, yeah, you know, we had the one push on the beginning meeting, we'll, we'll reassess it our next meeting just to make sure if there's anything that, that needs to move slightly.
Only one member has gotten back, said that there was, and we adjusted, adjusted, the schedule was adjusted for, actually, two members.
Yeah, one, one meeting on there that was dated for the day before Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
So...
So by this, we're hoping to have sometime by the end of February, a new town administrator starting.
I think that's more than just a goal.
I want to speak to Brian.
Last time, keep on talking, last time we did this, I had suggested that you may wanna visit the communities that the candidates were from. We chose not to, I think you had a candidate you liked a lot, and it turned out to be a great pick, Anita. But there is time built in for that, so there's a couple weeks there where you, or a week, or at least ten days where you could, you could shave it.
Yeah, and I, I, on the last round, I had called, I called references, and I didn't visit anybody, but I called references to speak to them.
Well, even that process.
All right.
So, anything else you're looking from us? Do you have a specific number of candidates that you'd like us to present, if there's enough candidates?
I think three's been good, the last two rounds, we've had three, that was, that was a good number.
I think it's six right now confirmed, there we are.
Uh, six, unless you have some, I don't have, six.
And it's been out for how long?
Well, it just started, it's actually rolling, so there's some dates on there, on the schedule, there's some that haven't run yet. For instance, nine twenty-eight, nine twenty-nine, and ten-four haven't yet to happen, so...
That's right.
And the deadline is ten twenty?
Twenty, ten twenty.
I don't know how much it's changed, I can tell you from-
I'm sorry, eleven-three, we did it over to eleven-three.
Yes, yeah, I don't, I don't know how much it's changed, but I, my experience in working with the Collins Center when we were writing the charter, was that the, the in-state candidate pool for, for town administrators, experienced town administrators is perpetually shrinking. So, we may, I'm not saying we will, but we may, we could see repeat applicants from a couple of years, from last year, or whatever it was. You know, or, you know, or we might just overall not see a lot of applications. I think we got over twenty last time, I, I have to double check that, we did have a lot to vet through, which was great, you know? Some were out of state, most were in state, so, you know, people were on the move, but we are dealing with a-
Three other communities was looking as well.
Yeah, we're dealing with a niche, sort of a, a niche candidate pool in a fairly small state. So, you know, it wouldn't surprise me if we, if we start to see some of the same names.
So, so money's gonna come up pretty quick, I think, you know?
Well, I mean, that's for you, that's for you to negotiate with the board, but, you know, I think it's, it's a matter of, you know, what is, overall does the town have, have to offer the candidate, as much as the candidate has to offer the town?
I feel like we put a number in, in the two thousand and twelve Town Administrator Search Committee advertisement. I feel like I remember, and that was how, why we, we got a lot of responses back, overall. I don't either.
Specific qualifications?
Yeah, but like a minimum salary of, I, I feel like there was some number in there, because, maybe I'll go back, I was on that committee too, so...
I mean, any, any candidate that, that knows how to do their research will, will research our town budget, our approved budget, and see what it is, you know?
I would, I would leave out a salary, I mean, town, town administrators know what the salary range is gonna be, and they know what they're worth.
We did leave it out, and I think the candidates will understand, you know, that that is normal.
Yeah.
You folks have to understand that they might have to give and take on the, on the back end when you get, when you get the candidate in front of you.
Yep.
So both, both parties have to kind of work their way through that.
Right. So, you know, again, our job is to, to listen from you, our, you know, we're your hired hands here to vet, find the best candidates that we can, vet them, interview them, decide fairly on the top three candidates, and we'll bring them to you per the schedule. Vet them, interview them, decide fairly on the top three candidates and we'll bring them to you per the schedule that's presented.
I don't know, but we also did invite folks through social media that if they wanted to have any comment tonight, they could, so I don't know if there's anybody here for that purpose, but.
Well, there was one social media comment.
Yeah, they want a market basket on sixteen.
I want someone hired who can bring a market basket.
Somebody wants Verizon to improve the cell coverage. I would like to be able to know on what or it's not gonna happen.
They're not very picky right now.
Well, no, but I don't know, I don't know, you never know who's in the audience, I know you just, we said we'd do it, so.
Yeah, and if anyone has any comments or or any questions relative to the discussion we're currently having, feel free to.
Chime in.
Chime in. Tom?
So that the general public would know what you're looking for, is it, is there some way to know where either where it's posted or would you post?
It's on the website and it's it's on just about everybody's website, but it's on ours.
Where is it on our website? I was searching for it and I couldn't find it.
Under employment opportunities, I believe. If you go to Hubbardstonma.us, I believe there's employment opportunities, there's a link.
And you've got the job description?
Job description's right there.
I think we have.
And it's the same just it's the same job description we've cascaded through the channel Brian has recommended.
Yeah, we updated dates, but did not change the sub the topic, the the.
And and did the selectmen sign off on that job description?
Well, there's still opportunity to change, some of these have not run and if you had a comment, we'd be happy to take it.
We looked at it a while ago, I think we had.
I sent that one before.
We had an opportunity to comment on it, yes.
Yeah, the last one I saw was two thousand thirteen, so I I don't know what's present, I'll look it up.
Should be on MMA too, right?
It's on MMA, well, it's on Maine, New Hampshire, Rhode Island, MMA. Mass Bispo and just wanna be up on three more locations.
Other question, yeah.
Thanks very much.
I just kind of have a question comment, you know, you spoke about the disadvantage of the town being small, so people use it as a stepping stone and it's kind of the usual practice. And it might not be a possibility for the present, but has anything ever been done anywhere where there's incentives offered or maybe not sign on bonus? That kind of will make people reflect a little bit and say, well, if I stay longer, I'll get rewarded and then you'll kind of maybe have more. Continuity and it might not be possible right now based on budget, but might be an idea for in the future.
So we we do have incent and we do have longevity bonuses built into our fire union contract, police union contract and DPW union contracts. I don't remember if the last town administrative contract had longevity or not off the top of my head, but we have tried it, it gets expensive. You know, we want people to stay and we're willing to give some money, but, you know, again, the what we can offer is a lot less than what other towns do, but yes, we have tried offering that and, you know, folks are gracious for it. To give a little bit extra.
Well, you might do a little bit of an optimistic spin on this, though. There are communities in the Commonwealth much smaller than Hubbardston that have had administrators ten, five, ten. Ten plus years, so there's something about small towns that attract a certain type of folks to apply. That's why my goal's always been to make sure we get this this notice out to as many people in hand, put it in people's hands, talk to them while we're doing it and that's that was, I thought, successful with Anita Shiper's recruit. And I hope to replicate that with this one, so. There there are some benefits out there. Folks who wanna work in this sized community, it's it's a sweet spot for them and we just need to find them.
Okay, yeah, Tom?
I just like to restate what you you and Michael said about communication between the boards, I think is absolutely essential in this town, I think it. Caused a lot of problems in the past that we really, really need communications.
That's why I led that, so, yeah, I agree.
That's the key.
And it's tough when we're all volunteer boards, you know, we don't, we're not here every day, a lot of our employees aren't here every day, they work part-time, couple hours here or there, it's tough. It's it's really tough and we have jobs and, you know, some are retired, some aren't, it is, it's hard.
Through the interview process, I'd like to, if you guys could ask the question, how are you gonna communicate? I think it's a it's a it's not just like, oh, we wanna communicate, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
How are you gonna do it?
Right.
That's that's a.
Well, not only how they're gonna do it, but how did they do it?
Yeah, how have they done it, yeah.
I'd like to see somebody who's actually done it.
Yep. We've asked for, in the past, we've asked for writing samples, presentations, things like that, that, you know, of course, they're always gonna polish it to make it their their best, but, you know.
I think what I'm thinking is. What we did back on the check was interview though was, we asked for a sample that they had written and submitted, we didn't want one that they wrote because they had a chance to spend hours on it.
Right, right.
Sometimes we're writing memos that half an hour before they gotta go in the back. That's the memo you wanna see, it's not the one they had two hours to write, so I apologize.
Right.
Yeah, it's not writing the memos that I'm talking about, I mean, it's the physical, how are you gonna keep in communication with the boards and how are you gonna make the boards communicate with each other?
Understood, understood, yeah.
That's that's my question.
And and I and I think, you know, our my experience in the past two boards has been that the the top tier candidates see that need or have seen that need through the charter. Because of the role that the town administrator plays at, you know, for every board, right, that they are that linchpin. So if they see that, they tend to identify that and and respond to that in their questions. I'm not saying that's our our take or, you know, that's an absolute requirement, but that's what we've found in in. In better answers to those types of questions regarding communications.
Any further?
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, so if we think of anything else, following this discussion here, we'll we'll let you know and and, you know, good luck.
Great.
Thanks for volunteering.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
I know, I'm gonna bring that up now, Deb. We're sort of off script for a moment here, but we've we've got a bunch of other agenda items. Do you guys, why are you here?
We just wanna hear what you have to say about what happened at our road, that's all.
Okay, we'll do that in another business.
Actually, I think I think it's actually addressed in the town administrator report.
That's correct, okay.
It is, it is.
Okay, thank you. All right, so next, Katie.
Hi, Katie. Hi, what's going on?
So we understand you're looking for like a satellite, a NASA satellite?
I'm looking, I I'm here for three reasons.
Okay.
Um, one, well, one was an email I sent to Brian about getting the account changed and has to go through you guys to go to the town meeting. You understand what I'm talking about?
Yep.
Cause I'm not using proper language.
Yeah, no, I got it.
No, no, it's just instead of revolving accounts, you do it at the next town meeting, it's a new warrant file now so that the next meeting we we get started on, we will put that right on the list.
Check one, done.
Okay.
Question number two is, I had a question and I did ping it off Brian and I pinged it off Lori. And I don't know if it has to go to you guys or who it has to go to, but before I do anything, I don't wanna like do something and then have to change course and go, oh, I just screwed this up and now I gotta fix it. I want to do the Hubbardston Light Fight and possibly a cardboard boat regatta and I want prizes, like cash prizes. So there's money in the account and there'd be money that you'd have to pay to enter into these contests. My question is, is can the cash prizes come out of the account to the winners as a check? Or do I have to get a sponsor to write a check as a prize?
I have absolutely no idea.
I know, nobody has any idea, this is my question, I need an answer.
What are you talking about prizes, like twenty five dollar gift certificate or?
No, 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 money talks, that ain't gonna do nothing. Um, no, like a like a two hundred dollar, like for grand prize, you know, cause if you're gonna do, like go out of your way to do something. I mean, it seriously, you wanna win twenty five dollars or you wanna win like two hundred dollars?
Well, the the money in the account is donated money for the most part.
It's fundraised money.
It's fundraised money, so.
Yes, we fundraise for it.
I think I think it gets dicey, we're gonna, we're asking and we're asking accounts to look. I think it gets dicey on that, it would always be better if you had one or even two sponsors that teamed up, put the money aside and wrote the check. Than to have it run through our accounting system where there might be provisions that we haven't considered.
Yeah, that's that's what I'm asking.
We've had this come up with a raffle.
I'm still asking because she, I was asked and I will.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
But there may be a better way to do it, quicker, easier, more assured.
Okay, because, yeah, cause that's, like, I don't wanna start paperwork and start taking app, you know, applications for like a holiday light fight, which I really need to do if I'm gonna start doing this.
For instance, the gift might be a gift, you know, a collection of gift cards, if if four sponsors gave you twenty five dollar gift cards, you should you then have at least a hundred dollars of it or eight gave you.
Yeah. Well, yeah, cause the whole, yeah, cause if we had, you know, the holiday light fight, you know, like it's gotta be a prize.
They have to avoid the entire bureaucracy and and state statute and just go for the prize.
Okay.
Yeah, so, okay, so we're still on a standstill with that.
Okay, we got a question, we got a question?
I just, I'm not really sure what you guys are talking about, but the library raises money and does a raffle thing and gives out prizes, maybe somebody who's on that committee could could lead you in the right direction?
Yeah, but it's that's the library, that's not a town.
That's true, cause the the.
That's that's where my question is, because we're.
Yeah, so the library raises money in a in a a separate, if I believe correctly, a five oh one C three Friends of the Library.
No, that's different, if you have Friends of the Library or if you have Friends of Hubbardston Town Hall.
Right, so if we have Friends of Hubbardston, but the have the money was fundraised, put into a town escrow account basically that we can use, so it's not tax money, it's.
Interesting.
But then Brian's right, what is the legal statute of it then coming out of a town fund in, you know, write a check for debris?
So then maybe you just need to change it to a, you know, a nonprofit, like the like the library has and then make it all easier.
Now you're in a whole another kettle of fish. That that's that's a whole different problem going into a five oh one C three. Cause I sit on five oh one C threes, that's a whole different ballgame from this.
Okay, I didn't even know what you're talking about.
No, no.
Yeah.
No, no, you're right.
No, I understand, no, I get what you're talking about, it's that's, but that's a whole.
The laws make it very difficult to do simple, simple fun things, you know.
Yes, it's like, yeah, I know, all I wanna do is something fun with the town and it's like painful.
Well, on that issue, it sounds like we're gonna be getting response back and then we'll just go from there.
Okay.
Item three.
Item three, so this is the last one. All right, so, again, this is fundraised money that I did have a part in fundraising and I am staying on doing this job for free.
Special events coordinator.
Yes, and I'm solely killing my personal property doing all this fun stuff with my cellphone, um, which is like a seven hundred dollar cellphone. I mean, I do all the the, you know, emails, I can't even tell you how many emails I sent out, let alone, you know, the PDFs and the videos and all that kind of stuff, plus it's chewing up all my memory. So like anything I delete, I can't get back, but yet I have to save it in order to do something fun with it later. I would like to purchase a iPad. From the account money that we fundraised for for use for me to use, not a like just wifi only, not a cell one. But here's the catch, cause this is where I, there's a it's all fuzzy line there. I wanna link it with all my other stuff, the stuff I already paid for out of my pocket with all the apps and all that stuff. And the emails and all that stuff, but once I link it, then it's also technically gonna have per my personal stuff on there because there's no way to undo that. Once you start linking things to make them talk to each other, my phone and this iPad.
Now, when you say apps, so what kind of apps have you purchased already to?
I have all kinds of flyer apps and movie apps and all kinds of generative where I make things and just, it helps me do PDFs and all kinds of like little drawing things and stuff. And a lot of them aren't like a lot of money, but when you add them all up, they start to turn into real money that I've bought for myself over time to play with, you know, do little fun things like that little video thing that I threw up there the other day. You know, that's, you know, part of one of my apps that I've paid for myself personally, cause I've done videos for other things myself and, you know, it's, things like that, plus all the. The, like the Facebook page and stuff, it's linked to my personal, you know, because it all needs to go, when you open up pages and they all talk to each other and stuff. It's a big hot mess, so that's my question is there's, there's not a fine line, there's not, okay, this is this and this is this, no, they intermingle. And my thing is, is like if I were to walk away and say, okay, I've had enough playtime, I'm done, somebody else needs to take this over. The iPad could be wiped completely with everything and then handed into the town, cause it's the town's property, but. It would be, until then, it would have my personal stuff on it too, not that I'd use it for my personal stuff, but it'd still be on there. It's not like I'm gonna be sitting home doing emails on it myself, you know, I use my own phone to do emails. But to make videos and flyers and you get better quality, I it would hold more videos so I can hold on to them, cause like all the two fifty stuff, I had to wipe from my phone. So it's gone, you know, it's it's either online or it's been, you know, I can't hold on to that stuff, cause my phone only has so much memory.
So what would be the problem with, we're just talking here, or what would would there be an issue with, let's just say that, you know, you had the iPad and then you repurchased all of those apps specifically for the iPad?
There's not, but you, once I link the 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 Facebook page and the email and all that stuff, plus a lot of these people email me on one of my other accounts. So it's still going to my other phone, you know, it's it's it's, it all got intermingled weird, cause it started out as like I was just an add-on committee member.
Yeah.
And then I turned into a committee member and then I turned it into the one that was left standing. And now I turned it in, well, we turned it into a whole different, a long-term thing.
Yeah.
So again, there's no, it it's like all fuzzy and I don't like fuzzy, I like clean, this is this and that's that, and that's why I'm like, I don't know if this is even. Cause all, you know, eventually I would buy my own eventually, but again, then I'd be killing my own personal property again to do this whole job for free for the town of Hubbardston. That, you know, is, and not that it's, I don't mi- I don't mind doing it free, I don't mind doing this, I like it and I think somebody needs to do it. But again, I'm doing this for free and the least is not to kill my own personal property.
No, I understand the scenario, Brian, then Tom?
The the suggestion I was gonna have was that that I I wouldn't mix, I wouldn't mingle, I would simply maybe subsidize. There might be some way to subsidize a fixed amount a month for the use of, and she then is free to purchase another one, use it as a subsidy to pay for it if she wants. But you then keep, her stuff stays on on her property, you're you're renting space, if you will, on her on her electronics. And then you're not in the situation where there is mingling of her information on a town piece of property.
So we're renting the part of that product that's being used for the special events coordinator?
The special events, that's right.
And that's cool?
And that way, if she she can be cross-linked with anybody she wants, you don't care. You're getting your product when she produces it and as long as you're happy with the production. You don't have to worry about who owns what and whether it's mixed.
Tom?
There's two things, is she really should be talking to Joyce about this record retention laws, cause you can't just be deleting emails that you sent.
I haven't deleted any, that's why, it's all there.
I'm just saying, and then I think that'd be great if we did that, but as a member of the planning board, I think you're gonna, and you're opening up Pandora's Box. Everyone that volunteers with town is gonna wanna have their personal computer reimbursed iPads. With thousands of pages of documents.
I mean, I'm I'm okay. I mean, an iPad laptop, they're all a couple hundred bucks, I mean, it's not, it's not much, but, you know, Tom's right, if we buy a laptop or an iPad for this, well. I use all my own personal stuff to do this job and you use all your own personal stuff to do that job and, you know, where where does the line stop? And I'm totally fine with it, I don't need to be reimbursed for any any computer use or phone use that I have here, but. You know, what's gonna happen when another board comes in, Conservation Commission, Open Space, somebody says, well, we we write emails and that's, where where do you draw the line?
But I guess the argument then could be, you know, is it, you know, that that's just saying that every position is exactly the same then and it's got the same sort of level of. Creativity slash technology required to execute the position, the duties of the position?
Plus, there's also, the difference is, is this is money that I worked to fundraise, this is not coming from anybody's tax money.
Right, right.
And that and that's where there is a little, I mean, not a huge difference, I still get it, you know, I get what, I totally get what, you know, Tom's saying. So it's the, this is a weird new spot, so that's why I'm like, I don't know what, I, you know, okay, let's go see you guys.
Oh, if you want, we can put this out on our list serves and just see if anybody, any other community that struggled, that might have struggled with something, I'll just see what they came up with.
Yeah, cause I. That'd be, that'd be great, I'm glad you came in tonight, you know, I don't think we're gonna be able to decide this right at the moment.
No, then that's fine, yeah.
But, um, oh, sorry, question, yeah?
Like, I'm the CPC chair, Tom's unplanning, Tom's unplanning, you guys select where, don't we, couldn't we create a. An email address for Hubbardston celebrations or whatever we're calling it, that would be not tied to hers, that could be followed, not like the rest of us do, like the rest of the boards.
Well, we don't have our own town email, but, I mean, you can create a Gmail, which I think you guys have a Gmail, you guys have a Gmail.
This is a Gmail, yes.
No, I have, I have, um, like some CPC thing through an exchange that we, that apparently is a town email, that someday may move over to Gmail.
Yeah.
No, we we don't, you guys don't have your town email, we don't propose.
Each each department, each department has their own email.
Yes, like.
Well, you have BOSS.
We have BOSS.
Oh, well, all right, right, look, I don't have like Michael dot stout or at Hubbardston mass.
Well, no, but she's not a a member of six, it's just her, so she would be.
Yeah. I'm the only one, yeah, I do have a town, it was created, it's Hubbardston two five oh at gmail dot com and.
But I think the town email is still on charter.
Well, this was created as the two fiftieth, you know, so it's.
Right, you know what I mean, though.
Yeah.
And then if then like if if say tomorrow you decided you didn't wanna do that and someone else got appointed to it, it would just transfer over.
Yeah, yeah, there's.
And then you would just make that new person for Facebook, the administrator, just like when you're on your, like, you know.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, and that's the same thing with the email, it's not.
So Katie, what then what's the personal mixing? So if you if you download the apps to the iPad and like.
Because. Once, when you, okay, have you, you ever linked your.
All of the stuff transfers.
Everything transfers, you can't like pick and choose, it's everything, so in other words, if I'm out and about and I need to load something to Facebook, the iPad won't do that. The phone will, either I have to create a hotspot with my phone to make the iPad to be able to do that. It's, when you link them together. It's, when you link them together to get one, it doesn't, one, you can't pick and choose what it does, it automatically, they all just talk to each other. And the same, like, a text goes to this phone and to the iPad. It, email goes to this and the iPad, it's all everything.
Alright, so then we, so if we take up some, well, some of this Brian's suggestion where the celebration fund would pay the coordinator a certain amount of money per year for use of their property or something like that?
Yeah.
You know, that way you've-
Unless you come up with a new account for the app, that has nothing to do with your own, and then just do all new apps like Dance or Just.
Yeah, just staff them, just start all over.
Yeah, but it's still the, even the app, but the, it's still the other stuff, cause like, you email me on my J and K. And then I have somebody else that emails me on my K, um, Young five oh nine. It's like, everyone has like a different, and I keep trying to correct the emails, but it's like, no matter how much I correct it, they're still out there. Cause I have five or six emails depending on what it is, and they grab on to whatever, cause somehow, where along the path, that's the email they gotta hold up.
There's no auto forward for emails.
Well, let's, let's, we'll, we'll, we'll use this as best practice.
Let me look for best practices and, and, uh, let's think one, let's think one.
We're gonna figure something out, I think, but, um-
Yeah, and it's the same thing with the Facebook page, it's, it all, they all link to my, all the pages I run, cause this isn't the only page. I have Girl Scouts, yeah, I know, Girl Scouts and the Hubbardson Scholarship and all that stuff, and it automatically links back to my personal page, cause you need all that information to build, you know, to start a page. They, it just goes from there, and then you have an app that has pages, but then, so if I had the app, all the other pages are gonna be on there, because it's still my account. So there's no, like I said, it's, it's very, there's no clean lines anymore, there's, there's no clean lines, once, once we started this, and it was supposed to end, not a big deal, but now it didn't end, and now there's no clean lines, and now I'm, yeah.
Alright, we'll come up with something.
Yep.
Okay, alright. Alright, thank you guys.
Thanks Katie for everything you do.
Thanks.
Yes, for giving you more work, that's great.
Can we, uh, can we move to eight?
Absolutely.
Um, and let me, uh, so let me get kind of speeded up the folks that are here, uh, we had, uh, at the time I wrote the, uh, uh, this town management history report, and, and at the time I wrote it, uh, we had, uh, had received one, um, email from a streeter resident subsequently, and I think they were at your place, if not in your packet.
Yes, they're-
And the packet went out after I finished, um, there's well over seven or eight now that, um, that came in, and all of them are in, um, um, I, I think fair to say high praise of the, of the work that was done. We did receive one, uh, bit of a sour note on the corner property owner, uh, but that had more to do with the, uh, with the delineation of the, of the edge of traveled way than it did the grading of the street, so, um, I know there were folks that were here, wanted to try to get this moved back up to the top. We received, uh, I, I haven't changed my mind as to whether this is the right course of action, but it was done and done well by DPW.
Well, good, yeah, no, I mean, it's sorta rare that we get good feedback for anything, um, so that was nice. But, um, I know, uh, you know, it sounds like, uh, it sounds like what we put in motion, um, with the sort of caveat of, of trying not to set too much of a precedent, as we couched it with the fact that we were working on a sort of ultimate solution, um, I absolutely think, you know, went perfectly. So, you know, feel free, anybody, if you wanna chime in on, I guess, your thoughts on the work itself, uh, on the DPW or, or, or anything else, or if you wanna give us any sort of update on other things you've been thinking about, um, or nothing, but just giving you the opportunity to, uh, now that we have this out on the table here.
So I, I'll just start by saying, I think we were all amazed, number one, how quickly they came, how hard they worked, and the end result was amazing. I mean, all of us on the road, is exactly what we were looking for, um, he, the guy who ran that machine was, he just did amazing work, so it just, it came out really, really nice,
Eric Booney.
And it's exactly what we had been hoping for, so, we all were incredibly appreciative.
You know, I've driven down there, I think you said you've been down, I don't know if anybody else has sort of taken a look, but it's, uh-
I drove down there too. Night and day.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's just amazing.
Yeah, it, it's out well now, too, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You should stripe it now, stripe, it's striped.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's extra on the sides, extra film.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, we, we just had, we had one, September thirteenth, we had a, a complaint, um, uh, that the town was trespassing on private property, um-
Yeah, but that was the, uh, that was really not a traveled way issue, but I, I, it was one that the person asked me to communicate that information to you, so I felt I should.
Mm-huh. No, and so what, I'm concerned, Brian, the last sentence in this, uh, this letter from those residents said that they, uh, did not sign a waiver giving permission to the town or anyone else hired by the town to plow their half of Street or Road. So does that, they're, so they're not allowing winter plowing?
No, the, uh, the plowing thing does not require, as I recall, does not require a hundred percent, uh, to have, uh, to have the town move forward.
Right.
It was the, the ultimate, uh, issue on the betterment that would have required all of them to sign, and the, the Street or Road folks never met that standard, but they did meet the fifty-one percent standard, so I don't, I don't think we have any issues with, uh, we don't have any, uh, uh, concern about plowing the road again this winter.
Okay.
Just a question, if, so the residents claiming to own half of the road?
Yes.
According to, okay, cause I know the town, back when Lynn was here, um, Travis is probably around there too as well, they, I mean, they used to go out of their way to try not to plow snow over on that side of the pro- they mean, they'd have to make special, the way they went up the road pushing everything away. But if they're claiming that the road is half theirs, that that's half their snow, you shouldn't have to change and make special accommodations, cause they don't want their snow put on their property, just making a point, I mean, God put it in the middle?
I think this is a point.
Or nature put it in the middle, if they own the middle, they own the snow, so they should be able to get it like everybody else.
Agreed. I mean, there's a police report in here from two thousand fourteen about rocks and, I mean, it's just, it goes, that's endless.
Oh, it's in the-
Rocks out there, and the town or somebody pushed it back.
Yeah.
And, and that's sort of where it boiled out the whole time. Well, there is a delineation, uh, and in my view, of course, I'm not your attorney, but in my view, uh, having looked at things like this over a bunch of years, uh, the delineation of the traveled way was done on their property by their surveyor. So there is a delineation of the traveled way, which is in very close proximity to the, to the, to boulders, so, we feel comfortable plowing up to that point. And we're not gonna, we won't do anything that's gonna harm any particular side of the road or any particular resident, we don't plow into people's driveways, nothing's done intentional, we have to move snow. So if someone gets moved where you wish it didn't, you all trudled out your driveways and then it has come by, and, you know, you see the shaking fists, uh, at the same time, once you're cleared of that, you can get out, so.
At the time.
And their driveway's not on that side of the road.
Well, I think that's the reason why this is a bit more, uh, stretched, because it is, it's on, uh, is that Grimes?
No, correct.
But the problem that he saw was that they weren't notified of this, when the packet went out, I guess, about it.
Yeah, there was a- The snow list has not had, uh, nor did the original list that went out, uh, has not had the name of this, because they didn't, they didn't have a street address.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
So from now on, we will add that.
We asked for property owners and we got street addresses, and so we corrected that.
Tom?
Well, the planning board has them on the agenda for our next planning board meeting, in, um, to discuss about a waiver for the road. And we're, uh, we're doing research this month, in the next couple of weeks, we're trying to put together a history of what happened, and, and everything else, so we know what's happened in the past, to help us go forward.
Great, thanks. Somebody else ju- uh, squeaked? No, okay.
No, so I guess the question that we all have is, um, the complaint that was made, is that going to be, you know, w- we were concerned that that was gonna be an issue for, you know, the fact that you guys tried to do something good, which we all greatly appreciated, um, but is that gonna, you know?
You wanna say that again, Brian?
I, yeah, uh, I'm, I'm, again, uh, we're not, I was not, uh, let me just pick it on me in favor of the action we took, however,
He talked. You may have to, but this relates to that.
Uh, I have no problem with plowing snow, so, uh, as far as I'm concerned, you're good to go.
But I think she's talking more about, you know, road sort of permanent reconstruction.
No, we, I, I thought the commitment that the residents and the, you know, not that anyone signed any documents, but the commitment from that last meeting was,
Yeah.
we would now be looking at a planning board resolution
Right.
to look at the standard for acceptance.
Right.
And there has to be something above the current condition, but yet below, um, subdivision scheme.
Yep.
And that's what we'll-
But that's gonna cost residents on that street money. There's no way to do that without, uh, without a betterment.
Yep.
The, the problem we had the fir- when we were here last, was the betterment was gonna be for a project that would have lasted a year. No one's gonna wanna put a betterment charge on their, on property for a considerable number of years, for a one-year fix.
Agreed.
But so if we can get the, the standard adjusted, get a price for that, make a decision as to whether to move forward, that's productive. Where we are now is it's still, it, it's okay right now, but it's not gonna be six months from now.
Okay.
Okay, and, but, but back- Would that property owner have to be included in the petition we put out, since they don't have a way on that road, there's no driveway?
Yeah, not, not only, the, the problem you're gonna have is that the second level of the betterment requires a hundred percent. It doesn't require fifty-one, I think Deb's familiar, uh, it requires that everybody on the road sign. Now, somebody could, you know, if you can, if you can find a way to make it only be folks that actually front.
That would be my question, is, is there, is there an affirmative objection that they, they do not utilize the road, therefore they're not, or what is it in the road?
I'm happy, I'm a happy person, but I don't know. I don't, uh, I, I, I don't wish them ill or, or, uh, wish them well, I just, I, would do, would try and do some business in it, I, you will not be successful if they need a hundred percent, and that standard stays the same now, as it is now, which is a hundred percent of all the property owners.
Okay, so how, how do we, um, what, what direction do we go in?
Well, I, I think, move towards the, uh, the standard, because I think, you know, reasonable heads can also just have discussions over time, and I think sometimes those things can change.
Okay, so who, who sets the, I mean, we're getting really far ahead of ourselves, but who sets the, the standard, like you're saying, is it just people who would drive with, with frontage? Or is it people who are property owners?
Well, at the end of the day, the planning board is gonna set the standard.
Who, 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 well, who decides that? So the planning board decides that?
The question is, who agrees to it?
I believe those driveways are, their access to their homes is off of Street or Road.
So that's who you would say is-
The bone of contention is that one individual's driveway is off of Grimes Road.
Right.
But they do own frontage on Grimes and Street or Road, and-
It's a corner lot, so they have, they have, uh, property fragile.
Right.
They own quite a bit, I think, it's almost four hundred feet, if you shine it up.
According to the bylaw, the, the, the planning board has, it's their sole discretion of, of, uh, giving a waiver, and they set the standards for those waivers.
Well, you know what you gotta do.
Yeah, I was gonna-
Do you like brownies?
It's not quite that simple, I hope, because we'd want a standard that, you're knowing that you're not committing future tax dollars to a road that should have been brought up to a, a good standard. I'm not saying it has to be a subdivision standard, but there has to be something above a waiver that just says, what's there is fine, because next year we're gonna be right back.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Well, we're getting there.
Okay.
We are.
Uh, yep, we're back.
One step at a time.
Isn't there any current standards for the other non-paved roads in towns that are town roads, like, um, what's, what's the one right at the Rutland?
Halfry.
Halfry Road is a town road, it's a gravel road, and it's-
I think we only have one standard, and that is the subdivision standard.
Subdivision, right, so the, the roads, so it's, the, the question, and please, Tom and Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, um, the question really is the acceptance of a new road, since it's a private road, we have to follow the bylaws to accept a new road. Halfry Road's been a road for, you know, hundreds of years, right, we own it because it's been here.
Yeah, I don't know how we got it, but we own it.
Right.
As long as it's Street or Road.
Right, as long as it's Street or Road, though, most likely, but it happens to be a town road, and it was probably a town road or, uh, gravel road before the zoning and planning board even came into effect in a lot of towns, cause zoning and planning boards are fairly recent. And when you look at the history of towns and the roads they have, um, past towns we lived in, we've had roads that were in existence way before the zoning bylaws even came into play. And they were still in existence, and now they had to be accommodated in a different way, because they were already in existence. And that's all that I'm asking is, I guess, is looked at as a part of this whole picture.
There's, there's a lot of other stuff, there's, there's the state law that involved the town accepting a road as well.
Hmm.
Yeah.
And Ben just sent me an email the other day, which is thirty-five pages of state, state law dictating how these things work, and it's quite a bit of legal work, that's gonna be done as well, so.
Okay. Okay, anything further, yeah, uh?
Uh, just, just about the, the plowing, I, I remember in years past, um, there was this big push to get these waivers signed by everybody in, on the street. And I was wondering, does anybody know what the status of those were?
Well, you met the standard with, with the, uh, first dismissal of the petition, in my view, so you're done for this year, as far as I'm concerned.
The town's voted at the time.
The notice went out and said you needed to make repairs, I think, maintained still, the wrong body made them, but it doesn't matter, they were made, so you're all set.
Two town meetings have voted to, to plow their road, to have it down to it, nineteen eighty-eight?
Okay, more than that, right?
No, there's just two, no, it's two, there's two separate votes from the town meeting to allow the town to-
Really?
Probably doesn't seem to be an issue, that I can, as long as the road is able to-
Two thousand and two, two thousand and two, two thousand and two.
Right, that's, that's the, that's the question, Beck, you, you got something?
Yeah, I was gonna say, uh, the town did commission, and I think Deb's got copy, the town commissioned ZOK, uh, in two thousand and three, um, to delineate that section of the road.
This is ZOK survey, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if you've seen that or not, here it is, and it shows, it shows the, um, stretch of land that we're talking about. Uh, not the whole road, but that section down at the corner of Grimes Road where they have their frontage. It's an unrecorded plan, but it's certified by ZOK. ZOK shows that he took the center line of the road, which he told me directly that the, um, the standard that engineers use, the surveyors use for private roads is thirty-three feet. So he went to the center line, and he delineated a sixteen and a half foot corridor, not the traveled way, but a sixteen and a half foot corridor, and that's sort of, as you see on the sides of some of our town roads, stone walls at a back, a distance from the pavement, um, that's town road, um, but that's the standard that they use. Now, this person has been, um, blocking the sixteen and a half foot corridor, she installed these boulders on the side of the road at the radius that you turn onto Grimes, makes it very difficult for fire trucks, oil trucks, trash trucks, or even any kind of truck, uh, to make, to navigate that. And those rocks have been put on the edge of the traveled way. In this case law in Massachusetts, as well as laws on books that have been, um, passed through, through the house, that prevent people from blocking and easement, and we all have a right to that road, to use the road, to get to our homes, and to get everything else that we deserve as people in, in, that live somewhere. And, and by placing those boulders, she's interfering with the plowing intentionally, and it's within that boundary line. Now, we haven't fought that battle, because it's just too many, we all work too, we all have regular jobs, but those, those rocks are within the town's survey that they had, had ZOK prepare, two thousand and three, Lynn Gauthier did, and those boulders are causing all the snow to have to be plowed onto one side of the road. It's a nuisance for the plow guys, and it's, it's just wrong, is what, what she's done there. And I'm not asking to make this a bigger problem than it, we already have, um, I just wanted to make, make you guys aware that, that these boulders are in that corridor, and they're interfering and blocking the maintenance of the road, and snow plowing is, is, is defined as maintenance by the state. So I just wanted to go on record with that, that, that the town knows about the width of the road, um, and, and she's obstructing the road with those boulders. And that's a, that's a, that's a hostile move, that's, that's, that's gonna cause personal damage to somebody's vehicle, or maybe an injury at some point.
If that does have, that was my next question, what's the liability there, is it her, or is, is it shifting to the town?
It's private property. It'd be whoever put the rocks there.
Whoever put the rocks there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and she put the rocks there.
So in this, in the one sense, it's her liability, but in the other sense, she's interfering with the town's ability to-
She's interfering with all of our abilities to enjoy our homes and get to our property.
Yeah.
And including, including the town in plowing the road, or even a private contract.
So what options do we as a town have to, to sit and have those boulders moved?
Go ahead.
I just have a comment to add, add to his, this late spring, there was a fire on Street or Road at a private residence, and it took the fire department longer to get there, because they could not make the radius from Grimes Road to Street or Road. They had to go all the way around and come in through old Westminster Road in order to get to his house, which took probably an extra ten to fifteen minutes for them to get there.
And it was a brush fire.
And that was a brush fire that was spreading through the woods in a dry season. That could have potentially spread over to other homes, and, and those boulders were the reason that they couldn't make, make that turn.
Well, what options do we as a town have for that? Since it's private property, it's over.
You're getting into a situation where you, you'd be directive of, of, uh, a person on private property.
Well, we could-
This is the whole problem, it, it's one slippery slope, uh, to get involved in private property.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, but, well, we have Larry, right, we have-
But what happens if it's a private residence, the police or the fire departments is gonna come and, you know, and if there's any issue, they're gonna blame it on the resident who needs the services that we all pay taxes for?
There's an attorney.
I, I just wanna point out too, that, that the, the pond obviously has access for the fire truck pump to pump water, so that they can in fact put out a fire on our road, but it's at- But it's at the Grimes End Road a thing, so that meant the fire truck had to go all the way up and around, down to the pond and then be able to go back in order to put out the fire.
Right.
So.
I'd like to say, I did drive down there and I did see the boulders and I did feel that they were like a hazard, you know, right there on the edge. It's not like it's a stone wall, it's just blatant large boulders.
Yep. It was done for a, oh, sorry, go ahead, Steve.
It's not a stone wall yet, that's my fear, that she's gonna try to continue it and make it a stone wall.
Yeah.
So there's a, there's a note here from two thousand thirteen, I'll just read it. It says, Sharon, town council's reviewed all the documentation you provided regarding your frontage on Street or Road. And she concurs that you do own the so-called frontage strip as shown on the plan dated ten November nineteen seventy six. Town council also concurs that the two thousand and three ZOKC survey plan prepared for the now retired highway superintendent incorrectly shows the road line set at sixteen point five feet from the center line of the existing traveled way. As such, I suggest we set up a meeting to discuss how this impacts the town ability to continue to maintain Street or Road with the least impact to your frontage strip as possible. Our new DPW director, Tim Kilhart, and I, along with selectman Chris Norcos, will be glad to meet to discuss this issue. It is not our intent to have our attorney present at the meeting, please suggest some dates and time, blah, blah, blah. So I don't know what that means or the outcome of this was, so I mean, I don't know.
I don't either, thirty three feet would be a very wide strip, that, the, the, the actual traveled way there in some cases is well less than twenty.
I think as he pointed out, that delineation of thirty three feet is a standard that's all surveyors use and it doesn't necessarily mean that is the traveled way.
Right.
That's above and beyond whatever the traveled way, it could be a one-way fifteen-foot traveled way, but a private road would be delineated as a thirty three-foot wide area.
Well, let, let us do a little bit of, uh, of, of research into whatever came of this, of this.
Yeah, what was the resolution of that, because that's news to me.
I don't know.
Well, we can do that, okay, go ahead.
Cool, I'll have that letter.
One sec, Deb.
This was Anita Shiper's back in December two thousand thirteen.
Was it her opinion that that two thousand and three was a mistake, is that what that letter?
No, 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 it says, no, no, it was, Anita was writing to Sharon of the results of what the town council said.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, um, if I recall correctly, the contention was, her contention was, and I think that that's what that's backing up, is that over the years, the traveled way had crept towards her property. And that it now infringed on her real property, not just the thirty three feet. And, and that's what that letter is saying, is that ZOKC measured from the center of the traveled way.
Out sixteen.
She's saying that since nineteen seventy six, the traveled way had crept.
Yep.
Towards her. And that it really belonged ten or fifteen feet more towards the other side and that's, that's.
Well, telephone poles don't move. And there were telephone poles on that plan, uh, they're listed, it's shown right there, there's telephone poles, there's other trees that have benchmarks on that plan that are twelve to sixteen feet in, I mean sixteen inches in diameter.
Still.
Yeah.
Those trees don't move, um, they might grow a little, but telephone poles are pretty stable. And there's some, some pretty, pretty, uh, available plans of that area that are on record, um, that go way back.
But we'll have, we'll look into this, 'cause I, I don't, I don't, I don't think any of us.
Yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to, there's more to it than simply what we put in here.
No, no, no.
I'm muddying the waters a little bit without the intent to really do that. I wanna keep working with the town and the planning board to get this done.
So is there a particular reason why, do we know that the boulder was initially put there or just?
She doesn't want the grading of the road to keep moving toward her property, that's like, like Kent, Mr. Bradford had mentioned. That was her whole thing, that over the years.
She's been there to save, 'cause the town wouldn't let her put her entrance, entranceway on Street or.
Yeah, she brought that up.
The town insisted that, that she have her driveway on Grimes, Fender, I'll ever say if I believe.
Well, it's part of the bylaw, it's if you, if you have frontage on a, on a, on a stop on a town road, that's where you have to access it from.
Yeah, it would only make sense, right. Yeah, it would only make sense, but I, I, I recall that that was.
Right, she brought that up.
Yeah.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in, everybody.
Pleasure, guys, good luck.
So we got, we got a couple more items still on the town.
Yeah, town manager, yeah, town minister search committee is, uh, you've met with them, uh, by the time, uh, you, uh, this came up, I knew you would have been. And the new club arbitration, uh, I'm, I'm hopeful for a resolution, uh, that moves to your level of review this week.
Okay, great, thanks. All right, so, back to number six, contract with CMRPC?
Do you wanna handle this?
Thank you.
Yeah, sure, so we, uh, met with the task force last week and, um, uh, CMRPC was there with their very thorough three-page scope proposal, which we have a copy of in our packet, yeah, four-page, sorry, five-page, and it, uh, six-page, and seven.
Seven, exactly seven.
That was, that was, that was brutal right there.
It's growing, six, seven sentences.
But, uh, so, anyway, it's very thorough, Janet Pierce presented it to us, she was there with Glenn Eaton from MRPC as well, 'cause it's gonna be a collaborative, collaborative effort between those two, um, agencies, as well with the task force and the school committee, uh, which is then gonna turn into collaboration with all the towns. So this is a hundred thousand dollar grant, um, the, the, the task force voted unanimously to recommend to the town of Hubbardston, uh, to sign and go into contract with C, uh, CMRPC, but basically, I'm gonna just briefly, um, there's four main parts. There is a space use alternative, which is sort of obvious, that's the one that the consolidation task force, uh, has been discussing with the, the Collins Center that has to, how all the, the different elementary schools and, uh, um, middle schools and high schools and the space use and all that. Uh, the second is a, a regional shared services strategy. So we're not just doing a school evaluation here, we're doing an all-five-town evaluation, uh, that has to do with things very, very much outside the scope of the school. And there's two more parts as well, the, the third part is an economic development component. So they're actually gonna, um, you know, they already have vast resources from CMRPC, which is the central match, regional planning commission, and MRPC, which is the Monticuce Regional Planning Commission, vast amounts of data already and experience in doing this sort of thing, not reinventing the wheel. They all sort of live local and we sort of went through a lot of that. Um, and then, so those are space use alternatives, um, regional shared services strategy, economic development component, and then facilitating discussions between the district and surrounding school districts. You know, we've got sixty percent, forty percent capacity, North Brookfield's got sixty percent capacity, you know, those sorts of discussions, which have already been had, but, um, and are continu- continuous, uh, as well. But, um, you know, this, these new agencies bring a sort of separate level of, uh, experience into this. So, um, these four parts are not going in any specific order the way I, I just said them, they're all gonna go in parallel. Uh, so we have to expend the money by May thirty first, two thousand eighteen, a hundred thousand dollars. That's all been broken down within the scope proposal that we've been given, as far as how many hours and, you know, it's not, not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars. And, um, you know, I, I think we're, we're, you know, we've vetted out all the, the different types of agencies that we could potentially work with to finally come up with maybe some sort of, um, you know, doable plan to, to defray costs and, and better utilize things around here between the five towns as a collaboration. And so, you know, that, that's what it's brought to you guys today to, to ask questions and or, um, you know, sort of be okay with the, the path the task force has taken with the school district to, uh, to go onto contract with CMRPC. So I don't know if anyone has any questions, but, uh, MRPC would actually sort of be a subcontractor to MRPC, to CMRPC, 'cause our contract would be with CMRPC. And then because the town of Hubbardston, uh, is under the guise of the MRPC, the single out of five towns, um, that's how they would be there.
So you'd have four towns.
Sorry, no, I just was looking at him in the corner shaking it, 'cause it was CM, the, sorry.
Yeah, I know.
He did.
That's why I'm like staring at the wall saying it, so.
All right, so you need a motion to approve this contract?
Second of the morning.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Great. And we'll just brief through the building committee, uh, the committee updates here, which is our next item of business, the building committee, uh, updated you last time, we talked about it a little bit before. It, uh, is the, it has been, the solicitation has been, um, uh, made public and is available, uh, did we post that to the website?
What was it?
The, the, the plans and specifications for this, the new, this senior center bid?
Uh, we, I emailed.
We posted the bid notice.
The bid notice?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it's posted over there, we wanted to see if we needed to post online to where you wanted to post it.
No, no, we're, yeah, I thought that was moving onto line, 'cause we wanted it online.
Yes, and then we have it going to the gardener.
All right, so that'll be, if it's not right now, it'll, it'll go, uh, very soon onto the, uh, and then we know there's an article written about it last week or week and a half ago or whatever as well. So that's, that's where that stands and then, and then we're just in the, you know, we see how the market looks, you know, as far as how many people, uh, pull plans and, and end up bidding on the project, so.
So I have a question about that, 'cause before you came in, I had asked Brian, um, I, I thought we were, 'cause there's a bunch of different warrants from different groups that want on a special town meeting in the fall, 'cause you were supposed to do it in October. So are we pushing it back till November to wait for bids or what's, have you guys discussed that in the building committee?
We did, I, that's why I sort of came in s- confused, I thought that town meeting was going to be October twenty fourth, 'cause the way we have the bid schedule out there, bids are due on what day?
Fourth.
Of October.
Right.
So we would have plenty of time to, uh, review the bids and check references and all that, to have it so that we could have the number that was in that warrant article item for town meeting in October. I mean, if it's gonna slip, it's gonna slip, I just, I don't know what.
I, I don't know if we have enough time, 'cause we didn't put in, 'cause Joyce had said we didn't put in for a meeting, because I, I didn't, I think we just.
We gotta open and close a warrant, there's, there's some time involved here, but the question was if the bids came into, the what was, I was advised was if the bids came in too high, this wasn't moving forward to a vote.
Uh, so, but there are other items that would potentially be on this town meeting, um, uh, other warrant articles.
I don't have, I don't have any.
That's 'cause there's no warrant.
Right, because, right, I guess it's a, yeah, we're chasing each other, but, uh.
Yeah, so you wanna, you wanna, should we, should we just set a date sometime in November, maybe, so let?
Let me give you a calendar, let me give you a calendar.
Okay, let, let this one pass and maybe we'll do second or third week in November and just set it, open the warrant and that's, that is what it is.
So the warrant is not?
No, there's no meeting or warrant right now.
There is no, in your.
Which I was confused today too.
Yeah, as am I, 'cause I thought that things were moving in a different direction.
We don't thought there was a warrant.
So, the, the problem is, is, is we'd like, you know, I, I, building committee has talked about, you know, being able to get, um, somebody on board in the event that the town votes, uh, in October to potentially take advantage of some good weather to be able to get a foundation in. So the more we push, what I'd like to see is what's the minimum amount of time we can, from this moment here, and then we'll go from there?
That's all, get your count, get your count.
All right.
I have one question, do you guys do qualifications of bidders?
Yeah.
You do?
Yeah.
When do they go out?
Oh, you mean pre-bid qualifications?
Right.
Well, there's the, DCAM requirements that are part of the bid package themselves, so.
Okay, so it's part of DCAM, you're saying?
It is, it's part of, it's part of DCAM over a certain threshold, so it's part of that, so that'll be one thing. And then we'll be able to, you know, uh, to, we ask for references, we ask for all that sort of stuff with the bid, so then we can find that out afterwards.
No, 'cause there ain't, anything you bid today, you have to pre-qualify your bids.
Yeah, sometimes, yeah. So the DCAM is that pre-qual, I am too.
How many people pull plans?
I have no idea.
I don't know. That is, uh, I can, I can find out, but.
It's on Project Dog, so is it done electronically?
It is, it's, it's electronic and it's through our owner's project manager at Cardinal Construction, um.
It's on Project Dog, yeah, so I don't.
Okay. So the Project Dog, you know, which I have an account for as well, uh, which I haven't checked, but there's a way to go in there and find out who's downloaded plans. Okay, so that's building committee, um, QRSD task force, I just gave that update. We have another meeting scheduled, I believe for October fourth-ish, does that sound right, Brian? Wednesday, October fourth or fifth?
Third or fourth.
Third or fourth, okay, whatever the Wednesday is that first week of October to, uh.
Stay before you open the bids.
Yes. To, uh, just make, we're, we're, we need to get stuff done sort of quickly, so we, we wanted to schedule another meeting pretty quick to, to get everybody rolling on things. Town center committee, we have a meeting Thursday night at seven o'clock right here. We are, um, receiving the, uh, update from TEC on our complete streets program, which, which I'd circulated a while or somebody circulated. But we're tier two approved, so now we're actually submitted our application for the four hundred thousand dollars. And what I've received recently, uh, has been a draft, um, of the utilization of four hundred thousand. Again, this is totally separate from town center reconstruction committee, this is four hundred thousand, which is the complete streets program. And the two areas, which I think I've talked about before, which I just received Friday, the engineer's estimate for each of them is a section of sidewalk, I think one thousand two hundred and fifty feet from the rec field to, um, uh, Williamsville area, that intersection there at High Street, I guess. And then also a section, I can't remember the linear footage, from Main Street down Elm Street to the school. So those two pieces, the engineering calculate, one of them was two hundred and twenty-five thousand, the other was a hundred something or other thousand, so they were, the, 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 the point was is that, you know, for something that might happen faster than a full-on town center reconstruction, is some other, uh, option available, which is this complete streets and maybe those are two separate projects that can be, um, uh, performed, uh, prior to us finding out whether we have a full-on design for the, uh, the town center reconstruction. So, so that's an agenda item, the complete streets, and then also, we're having the, uh, TEC's also providing an update on the, on the twenty-five percent design that we authorized with the seventy-five thousand dollars at the last town meeting. And, um, they have, uh, if you've seen, they've had surveyors out there, they've had, uh, sort of cameras, uh, uh, set up for traffic counts, you know, for turning radius, how many cars go left, how many car go right. A lot, a lot of sort of transportation engineering stuff has been done, and so they're gonna give us that status update on where they stand with that and sort of the time, timetable moving forward, so that's that, uh, committee review.
By law, uh, Jeff, uh, has been trying to get, um, in contact with me, I think we're gonna make that schedule happen next week or so.
Okay, thanks.
He's been diligent, I just didn't want that to pass, then he was, uh.
Understood. And so we've got a couple minutes?
Yes, they're in there, but, um, Pat was here, so I don't know how that works, 'cause he's not.
That's fine, he's just, as long as we have, uh.
A quorum that was here.
Correct, which we do, looks like for the fifth.
Was there.
There was an executive and then there was the.
And all five of us were there for, all, all four of us were there for both of them.
So this is the executive, okay. So I'll make a motion to approve the September fifth, um, open session, open meeting minutes?
Second.
Discussion? On favor, on favor?
Yes, yes, yes.
Oh, you have discussion.
Wait, all right, discussion. Mike, did you, uh, ask that question, or was that me? When you said, uh.
No, that was you.
I asked them, uh, town of Holden, what, what they did for the, uh, lighted tree, or I thought it was you.
Oh, actually, no, that, that one was me, that question was me.
So did we just make an amendment on that?
I mean.
Where, where is it, on the?
The very last sentence of the open session, it says Jamie asked Brian what the town of Holden did, it was actually me.
Okay.
I didn't even pick that up.
No biggie.
Good memory.
That's what it is. He's watched the, the video over and over.
His video over and over, yeah. All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the amended September fifth open session meeting minutes.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion? On favor?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, I will make a motion to approve the, no, I was not at this one, so this has to be, right, I came in late.
Oh, you're right. Well.
This is the executive session you're talking about?
The executive session, I came in late on that one.
I'll make the motion to approve September fifth, two thousand seventeen, executive session minutes.
Amended with me off of the members present.
Uh, okay, I'll second it.
Any discussion? On favor?
Yes.
Yes, abstain?
Abstain.
Okay, um, I guess that concludes, any, anybody have any old business at the table here before we open it up?
I just thought those lights, uh.
Oh, the, the lights, yeah, we at AS National Grid.
I did, I put a call in and I, I've checked, I'm chasing them, I can't get an answer from them, I'm worried.
Yeah, I know, huh?
No, no, you gave it to me.
Any, any further old business?
They were coming in for a poll petition soon, aren't they?
Yes, on the, um, that's speeding the second, is that the second?
Oh, that's right, I talked about that.
So we can, we can get that nailed down then, maybe.
We don't have to sign it, most likely.
Nice. Uh, okay, so no more old business, anybody? Uh, okay, we'll open it up to public and press questions and answers if there are any.
Is there an email about the town got approved for a green program?
We did, yeah.
We did, we sent that to you.
We, um, it means we're, we are.
It's, it allows us to file an application, I believe, to become a green community and they're gonna provide, I think it's DLTA, which means they don't give you actual cash, they give you hours, which is fine. So they'll help us, uh, work through the application process as I remember the, the email.
And then for, I, it's been a while since, but, but, but when you're classified as a green community, you then have the ability.
Then you have access to other grant opportunities.
Traditional grants.
It's a good thing.
And, and Tom, you had asked before, it, it does mean that we adopt the stretch energy code.
Hmm.
And it's expensive when you build a new house, but you get it back in energy savings.
Does the building inspector know that?
I'm sure he's aware of the stretch energy code.
I know, but you know that they have to use it then.
Well, if we get approved, he will.
Oh, oh, it's not, no, no.
So what, what, what exactly entails?
We gotta approve for a grant to, to submit the application.
Right.
Oh, oh, okay, okay, I thought we were...
We're not hearing it.
What, what exactly, uh, I mean, not exactly, but in brief, what is this stretch energy code?
It's just, uh, you know, they do the vacuum test, you know, where doors? Yeah, for your heat es- you know, the escape, you have to use a certain, um, rated window, R, you know, an R, higher R value, higher R value on your walls, um, just, and it has to be just a more energy-efficient home.
They seal the house, they seal, you have to have a sealed building and the company comes in, but most of, a lot of the cost is the company coming in, and they suck all the air out and then they, they do a test and you have to pass it, so...
And air transfer, that, that's part of it, that's part of it, but there's...
Yeah, infiltration.
Yeah, I think, I think we had Mass Save come a few years ago and they did that and then they went around sealing all a bunch of stuff and...
I, yeah, and I, and I think they do that sometimes, yeah, but you have to have a higher R val- a certain R value on your windows and, you know, higher R value on your walls than what's accepted now.
What'd you say, added five to seven thousand or eight thousand?
I think that's what the woman said, yes, to your building cost.
Hmm.
Okay, anything further, public or press? No? Motion in adjourned?
Motion in adjourned at eight oh one.
Motion.
Discussion, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Thanks, everyone.